I'm going to call the meeting of the county commissioner to order. Is there any public, one announcement, the county commission meeting is being video, audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before the county commissioners tonight on a matter that's not on the agenda? Is there any new business to come before us tonight? Hearing none. Entertainer motion to approve the minutes and warrants for the date specified.
So moved.
Sir, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. The one on official business we have is a request for execution of a license agreement with John D. Reedy Jr. And in absence of planning, I think Libby is going to walk us through this.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the market establishment at 21 Old South Road was required by special permit by the planning board to do certain things, certain conditions for their special permit. And among those conditions include constructing and maintaining planting beds for plants, trees, other plantings, and to construct and maintain a brick sidewalk. And this is within the county layout, so the request is for a license agreement with the county.
Any questions? Seems pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to adopt or approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any commissioner reports or comments to come before us tonight? Members? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Now on to the June 7th Board of Selectmen meeting. There are two changes to the agenda. We are going to get a brief comment from the steamship in regard to the boat accident and when the boat will be hopefully back up and running. And under public hearings, there's one item that's been moved to July 5th, and that is in regard to the Nantucket Prime Entertainment License. So with those changes, we'll accept the agenda by unanimous consent and move on to announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. Town offices will be closed on Tuesday, July 4th, in observation of Independence Day. The next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be Wednesday, July 5th. The Board is on its summer meeting schedule. There will not be a selectmen's meeting next Wednesday, June 28th. And our emergency management coordinator, Dave Franzudo, is going to give us a brief Jetties reconstruction project final update.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board. As you've probably ascertained, the project is complete. It was reconstructed to the original design height, which on the east jetty is 3.2 feet plus 10 inches for sea level rise. And on the west jetty, it's 5.0 feet plus 10 inches for sea level rise. So that's why it's a little bit higher than it was prior. Just as a point of reference, in 1963 was the last time the jetties had any work done to it. And they added 15.1 tons of stone at a total cost of $182,000. In 2017, we added 32 tons of stone at a cost of $1.4 million. The channel was dredged in November of 2016. 40,000 cubic yards of material was removed. So the Corps of Engineers quote was, "We're probably not going to be back for another 50 years." The contractor, Mohawk Northeast, demobilized on April 27th, which was 60 days ahead of schedule. And the only thing left to do is this summer, you're going, there'll be some environmental consultant work, doing some dives out by the jetties to make sure that there was no or minimal impact to the eelgrass. So all in all, good project, shorter than duration, and a lot of benefit for the town and island of Nantucket.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, we've got a brief overview of 4th of July preparation plans from public safety. And is Culture and Tourism going to give a brief overview, too?
Good evening, members of the Board. This year's 4th of July plan is going to be very similar to what we did last year. Just as a quick review, everybody recalls the big problem or the large number of people that show up primarily on the 4th of July itself. Historically, that's always been the day with the largest number of off-islanders and day-trippers and young people seem to come along. And last year, over the course of the weekend, we detained over 93 persons, which was half of what we anticipated we potentially would do as we did the planning. And what we learned was, we implemented a few features last year in our plan that made it difficult for some of the off-island travelers to reach the beaches directly. They had to walk some significant distance. And then when they did walk that distance, they found that there was no alcohol on the beaches because we implemented some procedures that reduced the amount of alcohol at the party by limiting, prohibiting glass containers, which is prohibited by town bylaw, and also by limiting alcohol consumption to personal amounts rather than letting people bring in large amounts of alcohol. And that broke the party up pretty early last year. And hopefully, this year, our intention is to follow a very similar plan, although it's going to be scattered out over four days. And what's going to start is on the 29th and 30th, we're going to start putting dumpsters, trash bins, porta-potties, extra, those containers out on the beach for trash at the various beaches. We're going to install about 20, 2,000 to 2,500 foot of fencing along the sensitive dunes at the end of the runway at Nobedear, and then also some sensitive areas out in Eel Point. And those areas will be posted no trespassing and strictly enforced by officers at those locations. And then we're going to implement some traffic and parking restrictions that'll take effect on July 1st and be in effect until July, or through July 4th at the various beaches. And operationally, we do have some troopers from the state police that are coming to assist us. So we'll have extra assistance each day, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday of that week. And our enforcement efforts are going to be at 40th Pole and Nobedear Beach. We're also going to have extra patrols on Lower Broad Street and Straight Wharf with the intention of trying to identify and apprehend individuals that are underage that are bringing alcohol into the area. And we're also going to be providing support to our licensed establishments by addressing shoulder tap purchases at the package stores and persons trying to use underage or fake IDs at those establishments. And those efforts will be happening steadily throughout that weekend. On the 3rd, we're still going to focus our efforts at 40th Pole and Nobedear and the extra patrols downtown in the beaches, but we're also going to be dealing with the fireworks down at Jetties Beach. There will be parking restrictions put into place on the north end of town that traditionally have been put into place at that time. We're, on the 4th, we're actually going to have a double contingent of state police assisting us. And they're coming in as before. They'll be riding the various boats, as they were all weekend, over, starting from Hyannis, coming over. And then we will be assembled at the various beaches and making sure that everybody can celebrate the 4th of July in a safe manner. We will be controlling vehicles going on to many of the beaches. There is a point where we can't allow any more vehicles because it's not safe for pedestrians or anybody else. So once we reach that point, which I, you know, I can't tell you right now what it'll be, it depends on how many people show up and how fast, parking restrictions will be in place. So people will probably have to travel on foot a significant distance to get to some of the beaches. So my advice would be, get there early. And then on the 5th, we'll start, we're going to continue the monitoring with dedicated patrols throughout the week, actually, into the week, the following weekend. But we'll start removing the barriers, the dune barriers, and the extra porta-potties and dumpsters and things that we've put in place. We have a couple of strict policy statements to make. One is, we have a zero tolerance for underage consumption and possession of alcoholic beverages. We also have a zero tolerance for any persons providing alcoholic beverages to a person that may be underage. Those persons will be taken into custody regardless of their age and dealt with. It is illegal to consume, according to town bylaw, for the consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property unless the border commission with authority over the property has given permission for the consumption of those beverages. And to our knowledge, no border commission in Nantucket has given any permission to anybody for open alcohol on the beaches. So we recognize it's an impossible task to enforce an alcohol ban on the beaches, but we did learn last year, it is a very, very doable task to enforce a personal consumption amount with enough manpower, which is what we have. And also a reminder that glass containers are prohibited on the beaches, period. People will be asked to return them to their vehicle or to put them in a pile on the side of the road that we'll have available for them if they choose not to walk a mile or two back to their vehicle. There's very, all the same organizations, the fire department, the Nantucket Cottage Hospital, and everybody are dealing, are assisting us this year with extra medical staff. The hospital has people on standby, on duty, and available to call in in the event we start having some people overcome by alcohol, heat, or drugs, or whatever. Just a quick review of the traffic restrictions. Nobedear Beach, we're going to have Nonantum Avenue all the way to Nobedear Beach will be blocked off to parking, so the roadway remains open for emergency access. Porta-potties and dumpsters will be placed in the upper lot of the beach. Mass Ave, Smith Point, will be restricted parking along both sides of the roadway. This will be implemented with the shack location at Smith Point. This will keep beach access open, although beach access is limited. Actually, it's closed at this time to Smith Point. The officer, there will be an officer checkpoint located there, an officer located there to keep people advised of that. 40th Pole, or Smith Point's closed due to birds right now. I don't anticipate that it'll be open by the 4th. 40th Pole, approximately 500 yards of restricted parking will be placed on each side of Eel Point Road leading up to parking lots to 40th Pole to prohibit cars from blocking access to the beaches. There's also no parking on either side of Eel Point Road. Officer checkpoints are established, which should be on our maps. Dumpster and porta-potty locations are also established. On Maticham Beach, both upper and lower parking lots will be monitored. A dumpster's placed there by the land bank, and there'll be porta-potties and stuff. We'll also have an officer stationed in that area to keep people advised. Cisco Beach, at the end of Hummock Pond Road, is clearly marked with no parking signs. There are spots available at the end of the road and in the land bank lots. This will be monitored accordingly to keep the roadway clear. The roadway leading up to the lot will be restricted parking. Dumpster and porta-potties are located in the lot, and officer checkpoints will be established at that location. Matickett Beach, dumpster and porta-potties will be located at the end of Matickett Road. Officer checkpoint will be established there, and restricted parking will apply on Matickett Road, past Millie's Restaurant, and along Washington Avenue. Ladies Beach, we're going to have an officer in that area, and that officer will monitor the area. And there'll be three established checkpoints out there, actually, to keep people informed. And there could be restrictions on vehicles going back there if it starts to get choked off. Are there any questions about the weekend, the events? I think Melissa's going to fill you in on some of the more formal town events that were prepared with this schedule.
Chief, I know we were successful in getting Uber to change and amend their blog to take out the encouraging people to go to Nobedear for a party and drive on the dunes. Are you getting any other chatter on social media that, like we have in the past years?
No, it's actually been pretty quiet. We, our, one thing I did forget is we are designating drop-off points for taxis, Ubers, things like that at these beaches so that they don't choke the road down there trying to drop people off and come back. But there'll be an officer there that won't let them go any further past the checkpoints. So all taxis and Ubers need to be aware, they just need to go to the, they can go to the closest checkpoint to the beach to drop off paying passengers. But we, we're not really hearing any chatter like we have in the past years. That's been reported to me, anyway.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Melissa Murphy, Director of the Department of Culture and Tourism. I wanted to take a minute to update you on the fun, family-friendly activities we have scheduled for the Independence Day celebration. As Chief Pittman said, Monday, July 3rd, the fireworks will be held at Jetties Beach at 9:00 PM. The rain date will be Wednesday, July 5th. For those people who cannot make the show, or for those who want to bring a radio to wherever you're watching the fireworks, you can actually livestream some synchronized music on W A C K. We do encourage people to take the bus to the fireworks, and they leave, there's a schedule of how they leave every 10 to 15 minutes, starting at 6:00 PM. The fares are fairly affordable. And then they queue up to return you back to the Whaling Museum every 20 to 30 minutes until 11 o'clock. On Tuesday, July 4th, the activities start at 9:00 AM, not with a town-sponsored activity, but with an important one nonetheless. It's the 15th Annual Reading of the Declaration of Independence. That's sponsored by the Unitarian Universalist Church. At 10:00 AM, our activities will begin on Main Street. There are the traditional activities that have been happening for years, including our dunk tank, watermelon eating contest, face painting, so much more. Marjorie Trout will also be doing her bike decoration contest at 11 o'clock on Federal Street. And then at 11:45 AM, the water fight between the town firefighters and the Boynton Lane Reserves takes place. I'm going to tell you a little bit more about a campaign that Jason, when he was the Public Outreach Manager, and I worked on called Keep It Clean. But before I do that, I do want to just let everyone know that it is incredibly important to us this year, and please help us spread the word, to have folks not bring water balloons to the water fight. There's two main reasons why, and I don't know how many of you have been down there recently for the water fight, but sometimes we see families arriving with 30-gallon Rubbermaid bins pre-filled with water balloons, and kids are just throwing them with abandon into the crowd, which is estimated to be somewhere around 3,000 people. This obviously has a public safety concern to it. We have not heard of reports of injuries that have been, anyone's had to leave the site or go to the hospital for, but we have heard that elderly folks or young folks have gotten hit in the face with a water balloon unexpectedly. So that's one really important reason why, is to cause no harm to somebody else unintentionally. The second reason is that all of the balloons leave shards on Main Street lodged in the cobblestones, in between the cobblestones. And last year, we had volunteers and DPW workers spend over an hour handpicking the shards the best we could out of the cobblestones. And it's an imperfect process, and unfortunately, some are left behind. When the next rain comes, those shards are washed down into our storm drains and then go into our harbor, affecting our water quality and marine life. So we're asking everyone to please not bring water balloons to the water fight. You'll have just as much fun if you have either a water gun or just participate in the, in the fun of watching the firefighters fight with each other. I'm not asking anyone to not bring super soakers, but please be mindful of the impact that your water guns can intentionally or unintentionally have on other people. So later that evening, we carry activities on, starting at 5 o'clock at Children's Beach. There's great family-friendly games, especially for young children's, three-legged races, potato sack races, wheelbarrow, really good fun. That all happens on the beach. Bobby Lamb will be up by the bandstand, being a balloon wizard and creating some animal-shaped balloons for kids. And then at 6 o'clock, the Nantucket Music Center Jazz Band will have a concert. So we think we've designed a really fun way for families to celebrate 4th of July on Nantucket. We also have, this year, merchandise. So we picked back up the idea of selling some things. You can see them on the screen there. Totes and T-shirts that are available only at Visitor Services at 25 Federal Street, the proceeds from which we'll go to support our Firework Gift Fund. These were hand-drawn by our good friend David Sharp, who is the Visitor Services Coordinator. They're really fun, and they're affordable, and I think they're a great way for both Nantucket families and visiting families to remember their celebration on Nantucket. Moving on to the Keep It Clean campaign, I'm going to share with you two of the seven images. The first is, this campaign was designed, there's about, like I said, seven images with a Keep It Clean logo on the bottom, all in the effort to spread awareness about how the responsibility of taking care of Nantucket is a community responsibility. So the first one in red was about the water balloons. The second one you see there is celebrating responsibly. Picnics, bikes, Americana is great, trash is not, and we ask people to go ahead and remove their litter. And are the other, yeah, here we go. Great, thank you, Erica. These are not 4th of July specific, but I think we tried to attach a little bit of a sense of humor to our posters, as well as really simple imagery that people can attach themselves to. So no butts on the beach, obviously cigarette butts. Enjoy it, don't destroy it. Don't put litter on the beach, obviously put them in receptacles that are appropriate. We really encourage everyone in the community and visitors to join the clean team. They meet on Saturdays at 8:00 AM, and they get the only two thumbs up poster because they're so awesome at helping us keep the island clean. Can't flush this. That's a lot of things that people throw into the toilet that they shouldn't. And so we're encouraging people to only put toilet paper into the toilet. And this one is my favorite, love your pup, bag it up. I think everyone's very well aware that pet feces can affect other dogs' health, and as we say in the poster, your friend's shoes. So you'll see these posters on the NRTA buses this year. We'll also post them on social media. I've shared all of this information with our Lodging Association, Downtown Business Association, Chamber of Commerce, Restaurant Association, and some members of the Real Estate Association to try to get some community buy-in in support of our Keep It Clean efforts. I do want to thank Alan Bell and the Downtown Business Association. There are some businesses in town who have agreed, and out of town, to remove water balloons from their stock so that visiting families can't even purchase them in those few days leading up to the 4th of July. And I think that just underscores a great community commitment to help us keeping the island clean. Do I have another slide, Erica? That's it? Okay, well, before I let you go, I do also just want to share with all of you a new thing that we designed this year, which is our Nantucket Pocket Map. I'm going to pass it out.
Thank you.
You have one. I have several. So as you can see, the Pocket Map folds down to about business card size. On the inside of the map is a great downtown Nantucket. It highlights where our public restrooms are, ATM machines, Nerda bus stops, and public parking lot. It has some great public safety announcements, a wonderful image of Nantucket. This is not a driving map for people, but just to help them orient themselves. And our downtown ambassadors, who are out on the streets already this summer, keep these on them and pass them out to tourists. We have plenty at the Visitor Services Centers, and if you want more, you're more than welcome to take some. Are there any questions for me? Okay.
I would just comment that I rode that bus two years ago from the Whaling Museum down, and it's just an excellent way to get to the fireworks with your family.
It really, it really is, and it's very affordable. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melissa.
We do the steamship now?
Oh, sure. Is that okay? Thank you, Melissa. Very thorough. We have, I think, a very brief announcement from Steamship Rep or reps about the Hyannis situation.
Hi, I'm Rob Rannick, your representative on the Steamship Board. As everybody probably has heard by now, our fast boat had an accident going into Hyannis on Friday night. I can't really speak to what happened because it's an ongoing Coast Guard investigation. However, I will say that the Steamship is actively working to, excuse me, repair the vessel as quickly as possible, get it back into service. We are estimating that it'll probably be, probably be about four weeks at this point. It could be sooner. Everyone's working overtime to get it repaired. We have in place some replacement vessels that are running some trips for us now. We're working on getting some additional ones, some larger ones. The one that's running right now primarily is about half the capacity of our vessel under repair. So everybody needs to make reservations and plan ahead because it's going to be difficult for a few weeks, but we are working as hard as we can. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. My counterpart Nat here can certainly speak to whatever.
We don't have a prepared speech, but the efforts in Hyannis were unbelievable. I think a boat from Nantucket went over there.
There was a Coast Guard crew from Nantucket was, happened to be out training in the middle of the sound when this happened, so they were already halfway there. And they were one of the first crews that was there to respond because they were just, you know, they picked the crappiest night of the year to go out just training for fun of it, and they happened to be there. So that was, that was fantastic.
Another thing, Bruce Mallifan is with the boat, which is always nice to know when you have someone you know watching over our fast ferry. It's, it's, it was, it was an incredible effort by the Hyannis Fire and Coast Guard and all the different emergency people, and it was a, it was amazing how it all came together like it did. It didn't have to be, the outcome didn't have to be as fortunate as it was. So we just thought we should say something because this, you know, kind of is skipping over to the newspaper tomorrow, and no one's really saying anything, and we kind of just want everyone to know that things are getting fixed and getting done, and the boat was on blocks Father's Day afternoon. Amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming. This was just a very last-minute add-on, just, it's something very out of the ordinary to happen, and I wanted to acknowledge it at our meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Lastly, we have a very special recognition tonight in honor of Lieutenant Jerry Adams, who is retiring from the town. He has given 35 years of service to the Police Department, and we are sorry to see Jerry go, but he's not really going to be gone because he's going to be a special officer from time to time. And if you want to hear about some interesting Police Department activities from back in the day when Jerry was first on the force, it's quite illuminating, I would say. So maybe give that a try from time to time. So Jerry, we're going to come up in front, and we'd like you to come down, and we have a special token to give you.
Imagine a better place ever to work and a better crew of guys. You guys are of guys. You guys are very fortunate to have the force that we have.
Thanks Jerry.
is not about, an item that is already on our agenda for discussion? Okay, hearing none. I don't believe there's any new business. Approval of minutes warrants impending contracts.
Move approval.
All those in favor?
I'll second.
Approval of payroll warrants and treasury contact, treasury warrants, we'll take those by unanimous consent. Approval of pending contracts, you have a list in your packet. Are there any questions on the contracts? Any comments?
I move approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have some consent items. Any questions or comments on consent?
Just can I have a quick clarification? The Real Estate Committee did not deal with the items under five, under seven, as we were never requested. Can I just know what that means? Is Andrew here? Yeah, Andrew's here.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
In our packet, it says the Real Estate Assessment Committee did not deal with the items under seven, Citizen Department requests as we were never requested to, under the consent items. I couldn't translate that. Someone can help me.
Just to clarify, what she was talking about is actually item eight, numbers four and five, because those were not really react issues. One was old and one was...
And what are those again? I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
Seventeen Clarendon, and then the Nantucket Fish and Meat Market.
Oh, right.
Acquired items. But, I think there was some confusion with the agenda. We originally had Citizen Departmental first and then consent, so the memo was a little skewed, but there was just some items that...
Right, and those are on the regular agenda for us to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve the consent item?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Citizen Departmental request, Assessor Request for Endorsement of Abatement Advisory Committee Appointments.
I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, we have a Finance Department End of Year Budget Transfer. Brian?
Good evening. So, as most of you will remember, every year between the beginning of May through the July 15th, we can come before both the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom for budget transfers. That allows us to move money from one budget to another. It does require both the FinCom approval and the Board of Selectmen approval. Last night, we did present this list to the FinCom, and they acted favorably on it. We're asking for, to move $86,000 from the General Insurance Line to Human Resources Expense Line in the amount of $20,000, which primarily is to cover additional costs relative to the Affordable Care Act reporting requirements. We're asking for $35,000 to be moved to mosquito control. We have a budgetary line item in the budget every year. Last year, we did additional work in the beginning of the year, starting the new fiscal year, and we need money to be able to continue through June 30th to execute the contract with vector disease control to go through the end of this fiscal year. We're asking to transfer an additional $25,000 to DPW expenses with the new administration coming on. We've been working very diligently with them to, in order to look at all of the encumbrances for the purchase orders. This will just give them a little bit of flexibility, just in case they need additional materials or supplies to get them through June 30th. And the Town Clerk, we're asking to transfer six, into $6,000. This is related to overtime relative to the elections and the early voting and the time to put all of that together.
Okay, any questions? Someone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have a bond.
A bond for $771,000 for some, to cover remaining expenses with, relative to water distribution improvements that we need to cover before the end of June 30th, so.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion in accordance with what is on the screen?
Some moved?
I make a motion to support what's on the screen, dated June 21st, 2017.
Thank you.
Issuing bonds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Planning Office, 17 Clarendon.
Okay, Madam Chair and Board. So, this property is in Tom Nevers. You, a prior board, had issued a deed for this property over a year ago in the interim time, and this deed went to the Housing Authority, who was going to utilize this property. Unfortunately, the deed was not recorded, so the transaction became stale, so they had to come back before you to get that re-signed. And in addition, they have asked for removal of a condition. The prior board had put a condition that this housing unit built on this property would be eligible under the subsidized housing inventory. They have asked to remove that condition, and I think you have an email, and they can certainly speak to the reasons why, but I think the main reason was the cost associated with the septic here. This is an undersized lot. It needs a special system, and I think they felt that following the regular covenant would make this, I guess, more feasible than the original proposal. So, so your choice tonight is to, if, to not do anything if you don't want to. If you want to re-sign it with the original condition in place, it will go back to the Housing Authority with that condition, or to amend the condition as they've requested.
Does Planning have a recommendation?
Well, I think, I think doing nothing. I wouldn't recommend that course of action. We talked, that we have a housing crisis. We should be moving this along. I think there's a valid reason that they have brought up. It will be a covenant lot. It will be there in perpetuity. I think that the 80% units tend to be in locations that have better services, you know, around the edge of town, walking distance to schools. This is a little more isolated than that. I, I'm thankful that the board is thinking of shy issues all the time. I really do appreciate that.
You taught us that.
What's that?
You taught us that. That's why I'm reluctant to work, you know, when I see something taken off, but I understand the...
In this case, it's a, it's, again, it's a 16,000 square foot lot in a three acre zone. It's, it will be eligible for a two-bedroom, one or two-bedroom house, and there are, there are people in that other income group that might benefit from it, so.
While you're there, Andrew?
Yes.
I have a question. We're saying it can only have a two-bedroom house. The lots directly adjacent all show two dwellings.
No, because of the change in Title V, that's what really has affected this area. Prior to Title V, the standards were much looser. So, Title V, I think you remember, it's about 10,000 square feet per bedroom, so we're, we're just shy of the 20,000. That's why they need an IA system.
To be able to get the second bedroom in.
Yes.
I got you.
And Andrew, how is the purchase price determined?
You kind of back into the purchase price, so it's based on the income of the household. Well, I guess it's a standard income that they apply. So, you sort of back off the land costs with what the projected cost of the dwelling is. I think the covenant lots are, have been selling in the neighborhood of 250 to 300, somewhere around there. So, that allows for the house to be built and still be under the overall 660.
I think it's 663.
Somewhere in there.
The, yeah, the comparable sales are in that range.
Right. So, this might be on the lower end, again, because of the bedroom restriction, as opposed to some of the other ones we've seen, but...
Kind of summarize really quick, so make sure I understand this. So, if we keep it the same, it's 80% AMI, which someone could go in there, but then they're going to have to, an IA system, which could be 40,000.
Right.
And lack of services. That's a disadvantage of someone.
Correct.
Okay, and then, but we don't have it in the shy, if we take it out.
If you take it out, it doesn't count on the shy list, but it still fulfills, I think, an affordable housing need and goal.
And is it, isn't there funds available, sewer funds available? They can be, that they can apply for that can go toward the IA system, isn't that?
It's a loan.
It's a loan, yeah.
A 20...
Is it a no interest or a low interest?
You know, it's, it's still $40,000 that's got to be paid back, so I don't, yeah. So, I think there's some interest accrued.
Well, I'm comfortable with our original vote. I think that getting things on the shy is very important. I understand the issues, and I don't want to hold this up, but I was, I'm comfortable with what we did originally.
I think that there's, there is an extreme need in that 150% bracket too, and generally there's more people in the home buyer, ready to be home buyers that are below the 150. It's a little bit, it gets a lot more complicated when you're below the 80. I don't know.
So, I think, you know, if we keep it with this current, current agreement, it will, no one can afford to buy it, because, you know, when they're at 80, if you're at 80% of...
It's the building cost.
Right, so I'm, you know, and as I said, I mean, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it's all about the shy list, and this board, I know, and passports has been very strong about that. But, you know, you have a policy, but there are, could be exceptions, and I see 80% AMI being more of a cluster development where there are similar, you know, congregate services and those kinds of things. So, I'm comfortable with Andrew's recommendation.
I would, I would also say that as much as the shy is very important in the law, but that 150% really does seem to be squeezed out of both sides. So, I think if there's an opportunity to, to address that with one unit, really, which although we need our shy, we need more on the lower end, I think the one unit, I'm comfortable with the change, with the proposed changes.
So am I.
And I'll go to bat for, I don't think we need to change it. I think if they market it and can't sell it into that level, they can come back. And I think, you know, it's going to be easier to fill the higher end than it is going to be able to fill the lower end, and the lower end is what we need for the shy. So, you know, of course, it's easier to market it to people with more money, but I think the need is, you know, is, is tough on the lower end too. But, I understand where people are voting, and I'm fine with that as well.
So, I'd make a motion to accept...
Is this ours?
Clarendon?
Yeah. I didn't vote that fast. Can I have a comment before you vote?
I think you're going to be happy with the vote.
Oh, okay, because we tried, we couldn't market it at 200,000 because then the 80%ers couldn't get a mortgage to build it. So, that's why we wanted to leave it at the shy, not on the shy list, but at 150 and below for a covenant.
That's, that's exactly what we just heard from Andrew, so.
Good.
Does someone want to...
So, I'd make a motion that we remove it from the shy list and basically follow the recommendation that Andrew...
Which is the one, up to 150?
It would be the covenant.
Yes.
Perhaps it needs covenant.
That's great, and we need a new title issued because it, we didn't file the title fast enough, so.
Second up? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed. I would rather see money from Affordable Housing or somewhere else to help subsidize this and get more things on the shy. So, I'm opposed.
Thank you.
The next one is Amelia Drive, Andrew.
Thank you again, Board members. So, here we're asking, this is, again, implementation phase out of a Planning Board decision. This is the new market at the corner of Old South and Amelia Drive. So, there are some easements and licensing issues that the board requested that they bring forward and offer to the town. So, this includes the right in Amelia Drive. Just so you all know too, and I think you may remember, you already accepted a $10,000 gift from Nevers Group to prepare a plan for Amelia Drive to eventually become a public way. That was done at, I think your meeting in June 7th. Tonight is a request for them to grant the rights in the road and to also license the area that they will be maintaining on Old South, the landscaping outside of it, so. So, I would...
You did that under county.
I did that under county, okay, sorry. So, we would recommend that you move forward with these requests so we can close this Planning Board request out. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, that's four. Yes.
Yep.
Okay, now we have some public hearings. A petition from Verizon to relocate a pole on Delaney. Is there anyone here?
Good evening, Tom Stanton, representing Verizon. At the customer's request, they asked to move that pole 14 feet so they could put a driveway in.
This is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public, questions? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve the request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have an application from Cumberland Farms for a common vicular license. And I'll open the public hearing now.
So, this is a CV, common vicular application for Cumberland Farms. Their location that they are building at 115 Orange Street. There was not a CV license at this location prior. They're going to be doing some takeout food service in that location, and no objections, and they followed through with Planning Board, the parking spaces at 17, Health Department Plan Review, and should the license be issued, just final inspections will be required before the final license is issued.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any comments or motions from the board?
Move approval, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then we have another common vic application from Roasted.
Correct. So, this is Roasted General Store. It's at 159 Orange Street. Previously, a retail location until this year, so it's going to be application to serve breakfast, beverages, smoothies, and takeout counter and coolers. Will have 17 seats indoors. And again, they have Health Plan approved, Planning Board for 12 parking spaces. And again, they have health plan approved, planning board for 12 parking spaces installed and required accessible ramp into that building as well. And again, no objections and no final inspections will be required before the license is issued.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing.
Move approval?
I had a question. Amy, can you tell us what the occupancy will be for this establishment?
I, it has 17 seats. I know they've been approved for 17 seats. So that'll become with final inspection as far as how it's set up and all of that. So I won't know that until.
But I'm, but I'm trying to, I'm back to the issue we've been facing with all of our restaurants, that seats is not occupancy.
Correct.
So I don't want, I don't want them to, so you've got.
Right.
Employees, you've got turnover, you've got people waiting in line and.
And building, building will determine that when they go in for final inspections as far as when everything's set up, it's built out. And I don't think they've determined that yet. Correct, no. They've approved for 17 spaces, got their parking spaces that they were required to have. So I'll get that from building once they go through and do that and issue the COI for that. And that's, that will have to be issued before we do issue the final license.
Okay. Okay. Motion?
I think we'll, we have less of, less of a problem with some of the newer applications if it's applied. The problem, I think, is going back to the old.
I just wanted to make a point.
I know, and I'm trying to clarify your point. I think you're going to find that some of those numbers are based on zoning decisions, some are based on all different things.
Let's just stick on, stick with this for now. Can we have a motion?
I already moved, I already made a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we have another common vic for a new ice cream shop at 10 Street Worf.
Yes.
Open the public hearing.
Okay, so the final CV for the night, Jack and Charlie's Ice Cream at 10 Street Worf. This location, we previously, this spring, had discussed, there was an application for a liquor license and such at this location that was rescinded at the time and then reissued for this. So it would just be a ice cream shop, ice cream frozen desserts, soft drinks, juices, waters and such, takeout counter and coolers indoors and picnic-style tables and seating on the patio. So previously had gotten HGC approval for the work they were doing there as well and a building permit. So there's not going to be a liquor license application for this location. Strictly ice cream, common vic license for this location.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any public comments? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Board, questions?
Do you have a seating layout?
A seating, I don't think we have, not a seating.
You're going to have outside seating from what you just said?
Yeah, picnic-style seating on, on the patio. I don't think this has been built out.
Where is the patio, is that, is that the shared patio?
A shared, no, as far as with another building?
Right, so I guess.
No.
They're saying zero in and 20 out.
They just laid brick there and put up a new fence.
Oh, okay.
Which was previously approved of the HGC as far as the fencing and stuff putting up and separating it from the sidewalk.
So this is the one that, we had discussions about that.
Correct.
The seating and the height of the fence and.
Yeah. It was mostly because there was an outdoor bar in that situation when we originally discussed it.
So where, how is this different, other than that certain of alcohol?
There's not going to be a bar or other sort of, it's just going to be an ice cream shop. So I don't think anything else as far as the height of, Michael Wilson here, the attorney is here as well. Do you have any questions?
But we didn't, at that time, there wasn't a complete seating plan, as I remember.
There was, and I don't think.
Was there? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Michael.
Maybe we can see that tonight.
Yeah.
That, thank you for the record, Michael Wilson for Jack and Charlie's Ice Cream Incorporated. That plan has been completely rescinded from the last hearing. There is no proposal for any alcohol or any type of sit-down table service or food prep. It's takeout counter. There are tables and chairs and picnic tables proposed for the brick area outside where if people want to eat their ice cream on site, that's where they can sit and eat it.
So what, but we have jurisdiction over the amount of seating outside? I'm just concerned about noise and, you know.
Correct. And that's going to, again, be determined on the build-out and I can't, you know, answer that. We're asking if a common vic can be held at this location at this point, if there can be a common vicular license approved for this location, food service at this location, whether that's finalized yet. I mean, we can certainly bring that back, but that would be up to, you know, building and all that, how they build it out. I don't know that you've done that yet, correct?
Health department has inspected it.
Right.
Building, it's not completely finished as far as the build-out. So building department has not done a final on it.
Right.
So don't we usually get the build-out with the seating?
Sometimes. This is just really a request if a CV considers, hasn't been one in this location, if that would be approved for the location.
So will they come back to us with that?
There's no.
Not if you approve the CV.
There's no proposal to have interior seating.
Right.
And there's.
It's the exterior that I'm wondering.
Right. Picnic tables and chairs for people to eat ice cream on site if they choose to sit there within the courtyard.
If there was a limit of some kind, I mean, it's, it's going to depend as they lay it out, so.
It's requested at 20 in the application.
Yeah. So, I mean, I can get you the final number, but.
Oh, there is a limit, there's 20?
The application requests 20.
That's what the request is. And again, you know, comes to final inspections, too.
And this is open till 1:00 AM?
It can be.
Okay.
If you, I mean, again, that's another, you can put on.
That was a request, 1:00 AM. Okay.
I mean, that's standard.
No, I know, but I'm just talking about, yeah.
Okay.
So if this, currently there's, oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, I'm, I'm not worried about this as just an ice cream place where they're getting takeout and sitting down at tables as long as it's approved by all the proper departments. It's not the same thing as what was being asked for before, where it was table service and bar service. And there were more details needed.
Yeah.
And it's family-friendly place to hang out in town.
But we have other establishments with lines around the corner and, you know, you have sidewalk obstruction and.
I mean, it would be a similar request, and I think we did that prior, too, is to make sure that the queue of the line is not going into that sidewalk, especially since that sidewalk is so close to that street.
Right. So how do we?
It's a, it's certain, it's a restriction. I mean, on the CV licenses, we certainly ask for the sidewalks to be clear and cleaned and that sort of thing. We can put that as a condition that to make sure that that line does not queue out into the street and onto that sidewalk. That is a restriction we can put on our, a condition to make sure that that doesn't happen. That's checked within that.
That's not just one.
It's a tight spot.
No, that's, that makes sense, the queuing.
Yeah. And that was one condition we talked about last time.
As an operator, well, I'll say it's very difficult to control how many people line up if you have a product that people want. It comes sense, it's very, what are you going to do? Go out and say, you can't stand here? Or you're going to fill the whole thing up? And then you, and then there's rules that you can only have so many people inside, inside working your business. So if you can't move the line fast enough, you have even a bigger line. So, so there's, and then the numbers, it's sort of interesting, the numbers are, you know, are not consistent and outside seats didn't even used to be seats. And now they're seats. And, and sometimes they require a bathroom in, sometimes they don't. So this is why I keep going back to, we need to see, you know, an entire grid for this stuff. That, you know, this sort of piecemeal, we can't tell if it's fair and equitable or not. And I agree with this and I have motioned this, but I think you're, the questions you're asking are leading to all these other things.
And at some point, we have to stop issuing these until we, you know, until we come to terms with that. I mean.
Well, do you penalize someone who wants to have an ice cream shop because we haven't done a grid and figured out what's fair and equitable? I don't think you can.
I understand. But the last time we talked about it, and I asked, when will we hearing back about this? The answer was the fall, which is a long way away, so.
I move approval if someone hasn't, but.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
One opposed because of the queuing.
Okay. Four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town manager's report.
Everybody leaves when the town manager's report starts.
Sorry.
I'm not offended.
If I wasn't the vice chair, I'd be gone. Don't make events.
Listen, it's riveting, so. So these are just some highlights. We try to give the board a monthly town management activities report and let you know some of the things that we've been actively working on. So under the personnel category, we are very actively involved in collective bargaining negotiations underway now. We've hired a culture and tourism director who is present. Janet, thank you. She starts in August. And we sadly say goodbye to Melissa, but she'll be here for a little while. We have hired a housing specialist, Tucker Holland, and the paperwork, I'm sorry, Tucker, it's coming, is underway, but Tucker, we can consider Tucker hired. And we are underway with hiring a public outreach coordinator. The fire chief, as I think everybody knows, has resigned and we've made an interim appointment of deputy chief Steve Murphy. Steve is here. Thank you, Steve, for coming. Not that you had a choice, but anyway. We have a lot of meetings going on, the departmental monthly and weekly meetings. We have a bi-monthly Nantucket Harbor Show Plus sewer project meetings. And as the board knows, we've had some neighborhood group meetings associated with that project as well. Some other various meetings. I met with the Nantucket Community Association this past week. They are a really friendly and involved group. The Six Fairgrounds Road Housing Request for Proposal Review Committee has met several times. And today, we had presentations from the proposers for that project and a recommendation will be coming to the board shortly. Capital Program Committee's been meeting about the fiscal '19 capital program, capital project request process. Number of projects are going on. Hopefully, the Milk Street Bike Path Extension will be done very shortly. First way, I'm told, is the sewer portion of that project is complete and the paving is underway or will be very shortly. Some other projects I won't go through, every one of them are listed there and those are all in the works. We're still working on 2017 annual town meeting follow-up. And shortly, I should have for you the 2018 annual town meeting timeline. We're working on some other real estate issues with Academy Hill Lease, Medica Land Trust, strategic planning, as the board knows. We have an issue with Massasoia Bridge, the retail marijuana sales law, Richmond Housing. And we've had some, I added a little bit of a category here about recent citizen inquiries. Sometimes those are interesting. We had some inquiries, more complaints, really, about traffic and house moves recently. There was a request for installation of streetlights along Westchester Street. Traffic Safety met to review that yesterday. Some parking issues have arisen among residents in the Sunset Hill area. And there is some discussion going on about improvements to the Tom Nevers Park. And that's tip of the iceberg.
I have one question. Someone was asking about house moves. They got stuck in Pulpus a couple of weeks ago, last week.
Yes.
And I may or may not have been correct, and I told them that it was done for the summer of house moves.
The house move.
June 15.
Range is September 15th to June 15th. However, it is based on time, so you cannot move them before 10:00 AM. Sorry, after 10:00 AM. You could potentially move one before 10:00 AM, but we don't love that because you never go.
And after 6:00 PM.
And after 6:00 PM. So between 6:00 PM and 10:00 AM, it is possible, possibly, that a house move could occur, but typically.
And there'll be one on July 11th.
Okay, so.
I left that last part out, but I got most of it right.
Yeah.
So there's a house move on July 11?
It's not a house. It's the modular classroom at the school. It's been moved offsite so they can finish their site work.
And it is a moving to town property?
Yes. For storage right now.
And so from where to where?
Elementary school to the wastewater treatment facility.
That's not too bad.
Not too far.
It could be, it could be a lot worse. The whole house move thing, we may, the island's getting busier and busier and we may want to take up not, you know, not going all the way to the middle of June. I had a friend that was stuck for an hour and a half trying to go a mile and a half. So, you know, it's something to think about. I know it's important to move houses, but everyone else has to be able to do their business as well.
I would note, too, that I'm working on a, a little spreadsheet for everybody about house moves. I would say that they're not all house moves in terms of we are recycling them. We have, almost the majority now are modular moves coming off the steamship. And from what I've heard from Huntington, they have at least 100 coming over in the next year.
Oh, my God.
And those are, for the most part, fairly straightforward moves. It's the recycled house that gets to be the problematic move.
And it's partly the height?
Largely the height and the width.
Yep.
Is there somewhere we can find out about, how do we find out about the house moves? Like, is there a way? Because I got caught on milestone for an hour and a half.
They're required to be advertised in the paper.
Two weeks.
Two weeks before.
And if you're on a private road, you're supposed to get notified by the mover. If you're on a public road, you don't get notified other than.
The newspaper.
The newspaper. We usually try to tweet it out if it's a complicated one. But for the most part, if it's a steamship modular move, it's, again, pretty straightforward. It's not blocking a whole road or anything like that.
I know it's helpful to get the little alerts from the Inquirer Mirror, the one on Orange Street. Construction was helpful, too.
We could probably be better about getting that information to the IAM and they could hopefully help with an alert.
I think that'd be great.
I can add one to my list.
Maybe Mr. Sutter's can take care of that.
Yeah, I'm sure he could.
Okay, we have many appointments. There's a number of them that are, I guess I would say.
Uncontested.
Uncontested, that we could take as a blanket. There are also a number of vacancies still out there, which I guess I should note. The Agricultural Commission has three vacancies. The Contract Review Subcommittee for Human Services has one vacancy. Council for Human Services has three vacancies. The Cultural Council has one vacancy. The Mosquito Control Commission has one vacancy. The Nantucket Historical Commission has two vacancies and two alternate vacancies. And the Tree Advisory Committee has one vacancy. Just in case there is anyone else out there that still wants to get involved, there are some empty seats. Do we want to take a blanket vote on all of the uncontested?
Make a motion to appoint those uncontested folks. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have the Airport Commission. Rita?
Right there, sorry.
There are five votes for Arthur Guesbarr.
I need to know exactly.[1732.13] Okay.
From Matt, Jason, Rita, and Jim, and there's one vote for Linda Williams from myself. The two incumbents are appointed. The next is the Board of Health. We have three applicants for two seats. You're ahead of Is this Rita? Yes. All five have voted for Stephen Bisco. Four have voted for Helene Weld, Jason, myself, Jim, and Rita, and there is one vote for Stephen Bender from Matt. So again, the two incumbents are appointed.
I have a question.
Yes.
On your blanket approvals, what are we doing about terms? Are we leaving that up to administration to figure out?
That's what we've done in the past.
That sounds, that sounds fair. Finance Committee, we have three seats available and five applicants.
Rita has voted for Denise, Joe Gross, and Joanna Roach. I voted for Joe Gross, Denise Cronow, and Jean Grimmer. Jim, Joe Gross, Denise Cronow, and Jean Grimmer. And Matt Fee, Denise Cronow, Joe Gross, and Joanna Roach, so.
So, Grace has four, Megan has one, Denise has five, Jim has two, and Joanna has three, so. The new members are Joe Gross, Denise Cronow, and Joanna Roach.
Real Estate Assessment Committee, we have three applicants for two seats. Now, this, the last one, we have 10 applicants for
Scholarship.
Oh, scholarship, I'm sorry. Five, there are five votes for Christie Flaherty, and there are four votes Rita, Jim, myself, and Matt for Jana Duarte, and there's one vote for Denise Cronow from Jason. So Christie and Jana. And now the Town Government Study Committee, where we have 10 applicants for seven seats, so that will be fun to keep track of. Yeah, are you going to check them off? Okay.
I'm good, I'm ready to go.
Matt, John Brusher, Curtis Barnes, Penny Dye, Rick Atherton, Richard Ray, Tucker Holland, and Linda Williams. Jason?
Hold on, hold on.
Do you want me to reread at all?
That's good. Jason? Can you read it again?
The first one, it was John Brusher, Curtis Barnes, Penny Dye, Rick Atherton, Richard Ray, Tucker Holland, and Linda Williams. Jason is Penny Dye, Christie Flaherty, Rick Atherton, Melissa Murphy, Curtis Barnes, John Brusher, and Tucker Holland. Jim is Penny Dye, Matt Mulcahy, Nancy Wheatley, Christie Flaherty, Tucker Holland, Linda Williams, Rick Atherton. Rita is Richard Ray, Melissa Murphy, Penny Dye, Tucker Holland, Christie Flaherty, Rick Atherton, and Linda Williams.
Can you read those one more time? Sorry.
Richard Ray, Melissa Murphy, Penny Dye, Tucker Holland, Christie Flaherty, Rick Atherton, and Linda Williams. Mine are John Brusher, Penny Dye, Matt Mulcahy, Nancy Wheatley, Tucker Holland, Linda Williams, Rick Atherton, and Melissa Murphy.
Okay, so if my numbers are correct, we have Richard Ray with two, he does not get on. John Brusher is going to be a member, he had three votes. Penny Dye, five. Christie Flaherty, three. Tucker Holland, five. Linda Williams, four. Rick Atherton, five. And Melissa Murphy with three. So there's our seven.
Now, we are going to discuss a potential for a special town meeting. It was raised by Town Council that if we, that we need to put some kind of parameters in regard to the retail sales of marijuana, and if we want to put parameters in prior to April 1st, where a license could be in hand. And it was a suggestion that we either do a special town meeting for a moratorium for six months to get that in place, but we can certainly have articles ready for a special town meeting to just put parameters in place in terms of what zones it could be in and any other parameters that most likely the Planning Director would recommend, and the Planning Board. So, we had chosen not to have a special town meeting. We could also still bring forth the fire station if we did have one, and a couple of other things that might be helpful in alleviating the schedule for the annual. But there are other things, but obviously there are things that go into doing a special. So I think that we had a couple of potential dates in mind, and we just need to discuss in general if this is the route we want to take, if we want to, there's a risk by not having parameters in place by April 1st, and so forth. Board comments?
I think, and I raised this with Town Council when she gave a very informed and eloquent presentation, and it certainly was, she said we are advising our clients to take a certain, take certain steps, and that's important, that we get good advice from Town Council, which we have. But the question about whether, what position this board has on the sale of retail, retail sales of marijuana, I think is a policy decision, and I think I would, I would hope that we could have, it would have implications about whether we'd have a town meeting, and I think it's worthy of having a discussion as a separate agenda item at some point, before we get into the conversation about a special town meeting.
I think we need to have that discussion now, because I think that there are time parameters in terms of scheduling a town meeting, and having the fire station be eligible, and just even putting any timeline in place to get a fall special organized. So I was hoping that we could have that discussion tonight.
It's just not on the agenda for tonight, and I think if we were having that conversation, members of the community would like to be, would like to have some notice, I'd hate to have that without publishing that as an agenda item, because it's a, it's an issue that people feel strongly about in, you know, different direct, different, different sides.
Andrew has a comment.
Thank you, I just want to, I just attended a seminar where this whole issue about the marijuana, you know, retail recreational marijuana was discussed, and I think that, I think, first of all, it's really important to have the town meeting in advance and have the discussion. I think, what I think, Jim, you may be talking about is that communities can vote not to have recreational marijuana in their community. It does require a town meeting vote, so, and I think, Libby, you put that on your, and that's one of the questions you could certainly sponsor in a town meeting article. In addition to that, though, it's important to do the other part, which is to say, where will the recreational marijuana facilities be allowed? If you don't do that, you risk them being, again, a retail store is a retail store unless you specifically identify it as a marijuana retail store, which is very similar to alcohol sales or adult businesses. It's the same with manufacturing. So if you don't specify in your bylaw that it's marijuana manufacturing and identify where those districts are, and I'm not talking about not allowing it, but you have to identify the districts where it's allowed to go. And I did send you, I don't know if the board got the information, I followed through with a map of those areas, maybe you can send that out if it hasn't gone out.
Which is the commercial neighborhood districts, is that the map?
I, yeah, I sent you around a map of the commercial neighborhood and the industrial areas, so you had a sense of that. I mean, I think they're relatively small districts, that's where medical marijuana is allowed right now, and, again, I think if you ignore that, you know, think of all the districts where retail is allowed. That includes the downtown, it includes the Mid-Island area. If you're comfortable with that, that's fine, but I think that we should be looking at the other districts.
No, I'm opposed to a fall town meeting, but I would like to do it, I'd like to do something in the spring, even if it's for one night, and then we recess for a week, and then do the rest of the town meeting. I just, I don't, I just, I think we're under such pressure, when we do a town meeting in the fall and again in the spring, we're always in town meeting mode, half the stuff isn't vetted properly, we're scrambling the whole time, and I just think it's, and a very few number of people make a pretty big decision in, you know, in the fall. And so I'm, you know, I think that we should be doing anything we can not to have a fall special town meeting.
So what you're saying, though, is a one day, like a one-day special town meeting to, not, to discuss marijuana?
Well, I'm just trying to, there's got to, I'm just trying to say, is there a way to, to do the town meeting prior to April 1st in the spring? So we have one run-up to town meeting, and I know there's a lot of conflicts in there. If we have to jump a few of the conflicts and then finish it, you know, five days later, I just, I just don't think that we should be doing a fall town meeting this year.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ask a question.
Let's ask a question about the fire station, so if you want, I'll comment on that first.
I just, if the question is, is it possible to have a special town meeting or an annual town meeting before April 3rd, the answer, I don't know if that was your question, and not this fall?
Right.
Up to the board, that it is possible, yes. You could potentially, I'm not sure we talked about this option, but you could potentially have a special before
April 1st.
April 3rd, yeah, April 1st, you could do that on, well, some dates we talked over earlier were Saturday, March 24th, Monday, March 26th. The administration's concerned about doing the annual on those dates is that it is early to have all the financial information complete, and I wouldn't want to say it can definitely be complete by then, but you could potentially have a special two weeks before the annual.
And not schedule any of the financial stuff.
Right.
Yeah, just have, maybe there's one item, even.
And then we, as long as we have to get it accepted by the, you know, Secretary of State and all those things, I think that would give us enough time.
Well, that, yeah, that I'm not sure about.
Yeah, from, from both the Town Council's presentation and the, and what I attended, the Attorney General has to approve the bylaws by April 1st.
Right.
So you have to leave sufficient time for that to happen, and I don't think March is sufficient time.
I'm also concerned that if something were to not pass and needs to be tweaked, we don't have any time. And another thing we talked about, if we move town meeting earlier into March, we could run into having to have a special, like, in June to deal with some of our budgetary things, because we won't have all of our numbers, which I think is much more problematic than having a special town meeting this fall.
Well, we'd have our financials at the regular time in the early April. The question is, I don't think we'd be asking them to have them before if we did something in March. And as to the special, to me, another issue with the special is, if you look at the amount of days we meet between now and when we have to publish a warrant, it's, you know, a handful, so, and I just, for, you know, for that and for some of the reasons that Matt reviewed, and the need to have a conversation about marijuana, I think we should not have a, I can't support a special town meeting in the fall.
I think the conversation would be how we're formulating the articles, in terms of how we want to address it, but I feel, I feel like we need to have a special fall town meeting, and that it would be really irresponsible as a community not to, in life.
Don, just going back to what you were saying earlier, if we didn't have one, or if we needed to tweak things, if things didn't pass at a special fall town meeting, we still wouldn't be able to tweak them until after April 1st, though, because it would come up at the
Well, we could potentially have to call another meeting. So you'd have
Or you, or you put a placeholder into your regular, well, you wouldn't have time. You'd have to call another one ahead of time.
You can continue it to, potentially.
Yeah, you could, there you go, if it failed, you could continue it as one.
Well, if it failed, then it's failed.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's, people don't want to do it, so.
Right. Yeah. I have a question about the fire station, because it's kind of been put on the shelf since we voted not to have a special town meeting. Is it realistic to have it, are we ready to, getting ready?
If we decided tonight?
There's enough time, there's enough time.
There's enough time.
Okay.
If we wait a couple of weeks, there's not enough time.
What does that mean, there's enough, what would have to be done to have it?
Well, they have to bid it. And there was a whole timeline involved in bidding it.
And that's a several, that's a several month process, and I don't, so we're going to get that done before October?
We heard from the owners We heard from the owner's project manager that that could be done before a November spell, fall town meeting.
Oh, I thought we usually have our special meetings in October. Do we have one?
It's whenever you-
Okay, but I mean, that's my-
We've had them in November.
Yeah, recently it's been September, October.
I think in 2016, it was October, and 2015, it was November.
Okay, okay.
With us starting to talk about it now, we, the dates that we had looked at were the November 4th or November 6th.
So I agree with you, Matt, on the, it takes our focus away from, you know, our next agenda item, strategic planning. There's a cost savings, right? If we do it, six, $700,000 for the fire department if we get it done early. Other question about the marijuana, is there other ways, so let's say we don't, we decide tonight, there's no special town meeting, we do it in April, and we can't get the exact zoning, are there other ways to stop a retail marijuana from being in downtown? Other?
I think we need to bring town council back, because it's very complicated.
Yeah. It didn't sound like it based on the presentation.
No, I mean, she made a very strong recommendation.
But also, it's going to, it's going to depend what comes out of the State House. They're discussing it right now, no one knows quite how they're going to handle it. They may put the responsibility onto the selectmen. You know, they may, they may, there's talk, at least I've heard on TV, of bypassing some of this. It's stronger if you voted in town meeting and you voted at the ballot box, but, you know, who knows what they're going to come up with. And I don't think we should do a moratorium. I think we should figure out what we want. I think a moratorium is just going to upset people. I think we should be, in my own, my own opinion is, and maybe I shouldn't talk about it, but I think we should do it in a limited fashion. And I think we shouldn't be doing marijuana cafes, we shouldn't be opting into that. But I think we should be doing it in a limited fashion, maybe with the medical, and in the areas that Andrew's talking about. And I think that sort of is a good in-between position that does it, but doesn't, I don't think we want to be known as the, you know, the, you know, the pothead place to come every summer. I think we want to keep this as a family place. If it happens, it's fine, but I don't think we want to be promoting it. Some, some towns are promoting, they want to do marijuana cafes, and they want the tax money from it, they want to, you know, advertise themselves as a place to go for that type of recreation. And I think that would be a, you know, a huge mistake. We're spending tons of time and tons of money trying to get a hold of alcohol, and, you know, I would hate to see us go a direction and have to be fighting that, another whole drug situation, so.
I mean, my thought process on this was not that we would be proposing a moratorium at town meeting, that we would be proposing zoning articles. So that this would be allowed as people voted it today, but it would have some parameters. Because I don't really think, and I mean, people can correct me if I'm wrong, that people's intention was to see a store on Main Street, but somewhere in the mid-island area, probably.
Again, I think we're getting into a discussion about another agenda item.
But it's pertinent to a special town meeting, because if we don't-
No, I'm uncomfortable, you know, drawing conclusions about marijuana, where to have it, what kind of, you know, articles, whatever, until, until we, you know, hear from other folks in the community and get town council back.
I'd like to have control over where it goes. I think I'm okay with having medical and/or retail. I know this isn't the form for it, but it does, it is indirect to special town meeting.
I mean, that was the attention, intention of this agenda item, was to discuss whether this issue warranted calling a special town meeting. So I apologize if that wasn't clear.
Yeah, no, it's, well, it's about a fall town meeting. We, you know, that's, we may need a special town meeting, but we don't need it in the fall. We could have it in March or some other time.
What kind of timeframe do we need for the Attorney General to approve zoning articles?
I mean, we just received our Attorney General approval for the April town meeting last week, so-
For zoning, right?
For the zoning and bylaw changes. So a two-month, and that's, you know, that's a fairly quick, it's two to three months generally.
So you're looking January, February. February the latest, if it's two months.
Yeah.
If we have something in process by April 1st, say something's been approved and has to be approved by Attorney General, is there any sort of give on the April 1st deadline?
Well, again, as, as Matt said, they're still discussing it, but the presentation that we heard, and at least the presentation that I went to, the answer is no, that it has to be done by that time, and that's it. If it's not, then, you know, we run the risk, so. I, I think too, the other thing, I mean, there is a process, I guess, for a citizen petition to submit for, for a town meeting, right?
Yes.
And it's, I mean, I, I think if, again, I think when that happened before, the board decided to schedule one, I don't know, so.
It seems that there's, it seems that we need one, but I think November feels too early for some people, February is too late. I don't know. I don't know if there's, you know, if there's possibility for December, January is still taking risks with April 1st, so.
I mean, one of the things we get accused of with special town meetings is lack of attendance, and I think that we want to try and avoid holidays or extremely dead parts of the winter in, in that regard. So that was definitely reasoning for why we talked about that first week of November, which is before Thanksgiving, and a lot of people are, are still here who travel during the winter.
And can we balance that with, I think the other accusation is the lack of preparation? Because it does feel, like Jim pointed out, that this is a big topic, and do it once, do it right, but November does feel close for how often, for such a big topic, and for what we have to make sure is in place, unless we're close with some, if there's, I don't know, anything Andrew has that is close.
I think planning had quite a few thoughts on it already, that they could present to us at a future meeting.
I mean, I guess, you know, from what I've heard you talk about, if you do want to restrict this, I mean, we need to, we need to schedule the town meeting, we need to, we need to vote on it. And I think we have four months to develop warrant articles on this topic, and that's sufficient time to do it. I mean, it's going to happen anyway if we, we, we won't have a choice again if, if the rules stay the way they are and it's April 1st. So it's, it's an issue that all towns are going to have to deal with. As we heard from town council, some have, you know, voted moratoriums to put it off, but I think if we're going to go through the trouble, we will have warrant articles ready to go. I think that we're, our thoughts are leaning towards the two areas where we already allow the medical marijuana. And, you know, it's, again, I look at other issues where we voted, you know, adult uses are a tough issue, and we have to decide, we have a responsibility to allow them, you can't completely ban them, and we still have to have that discussion with town meeting, or they can go anywhere. So, and I think people here understand that, that it's an important enough decision, you know, it's either going to go here, or it's going to go there, and our bylaws are going to be changed to, to control that. But I, I do think-
There wasn't a, there wasn't a statewide referendum on adult, whatever, uses. There was on medical marijuana.
No, I understand that.
So it's a little, you know, I think it's a little different.
I, well, I think that, what's the same is it's inevitable that we have to deal with it one way or the other. And I think that I don't see a way out from dealing with it in the fall. I mean, I think your comment, Madam Chair, it's responsible for us to step up and deal with this. And I know, I know people don't like to do special town meetings, but-
I don't think it's irresponsible not to have, I hope we're not implying that it's irresponsible to have, not have a fall town meeting.
I, I think that with the time factor that's involved, that we have to address this issue. And a town meeting, as of now, is how we deal with it.
Melissa?
I just had a quick question on if you voted to schedule a special town meeting now, and information that comes out of the legislature or Attorney General's office changes, at what point do you have the flexibility to cancel that special town meeting?
Okay.
Well, you can't. You, you potentially could, but it depends on how, like you're saying, how far we've gotten in the process. If we've already adopted a warrant, it could be tricky. I'm sure there's a way, but it's not easy.
I guess I'm, I'm just trying to offer the solution that in the short term, one could reasonably see adopting the intention to go forward with a special town meeting, and if circumstances change over the next, say, 30 days, based on the legislature or messages from Attorney General's Office, you may have the flexibility to change the special town meeting and stick with an annual.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Go ahead.
There's probably not too many people, maybe, maybe two besides me, who dislike scheduling a special town meeting more. There's no good time to hold one. Anytime we do this, we're going to be involved in budgets and the annual town meeting. If we do it in January or February, that might actually be worse, although I don't even know if it would be worse. In, in the fall, we're going to be very involved in the budget, the capital stuff, the annual town meeting. But I think as we're trying to point out here, this is something that if we don't take care of it in a timely manner, we are going to end up with something we might not want, we might not like where it is.
Yeah, I just, I don't think the intention of the community in voting for this allowance was that there would be no regulation to it. I mean, there's regulation to the liquor stores, there's regulation to adult uses. You know, I just, I do think it's irresponsible for us to not put some regulations in place before April 1st. And, and if we schedule it and some other things come down from the state, you know, we still have a very valid reason to have one with the fire station project, and probably a couple of other things that will come up. There's the playground transfer with the land bank for the school, you know, there's other things that we could take care of and not put off till April. It's not ideal, I would rather focus on some other things than go right into another town meeting, but I just really think that we have to do this. And that's the advice we're being given by staff and town council. So I'm going to make a motion that we schedule a special town meeting. No one else is going to? For November 6th.
Dawn, is it possible to limit what, what goes on for that special town meeting? No, whatever comes on.
The warrant will have to open. For, the period can be more limited. I believe it can be open for like a week.
Yep.
So I think there's a motion on the floor. Do we have discussion when there's a motion?
Does somebody want to second my motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
What was, sorry, Jim, what did you say?
No, we had a motion with no second, and we were discussing it, so I just was, you know.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, Matt, in your, so if we have to have some rules in place before April 1st, and March 26th, or March doesn't give us enough time, do you have a suggestion for what's the other, what are other options if you don't want to?
Do it in January, February? I'm not sure. I just, I just, I just, I think, I just feel like we end up on a treadmill and we, you know, and we'll spend a whole nother year, and the things that, you know, that we've all expressed are important to deal with are going to have to be put aside for this. You know, unless we're willing to meet, you know, more often this summer, you know, and ramp, and start the FinCom and everybody else earlier, because all of a sudden you get a bunch, what's going to happen? We're going to open this, we're going to get a bunch of other articles, and our-
Citizen articles.
Citizen articles and everything else, and our direction's going to be completely taken away from anything else. And I, you know, and so, and that's why I was not willing to, even though it was $600,000, we could lose $600,000 that we would gain from the fire station on one bad zoning change. Could cost the town way more than that. And so I, I just think that fall town meetings, I think that's, there's not, there's not a full turnout, there's, you know, it's possible for a neighborhood to come and, and, you know, and sort of vote their self-interest and walk out. And I just think we, it's, I don't know that that's good government. If we could say, we can't do that, great, then we, you know, then we could have the meeting. But I get worried, there's a lot of other issues that happen when we open it up, and some of them are good and some of them aren't so good, so.
I see, I definitely see where, where you're coming from, but I do worry that the other side of good government is putting ourselves in a precarious position with not having things in place and time. And then I think, I think the board, you know, we're on the same page about what we would like to see this end goal right now of the rules around marijuana, but if, if we do that in January or February, we still, we do run the risk of being open to none of that, of, of all of that being thrown out the window April 1st if it's not approved.
I think that would give us, we don't know that that wouldn't give us enough time. It would, you know, so, I don't, you know, so we just heard that it takes about two months after town meeting for the Attorney General to approve zoning articles.
So if you work back, so that's much-
So February, you know, March, February, so that's, that's two months.
Are we, is the suggestion that we, some of you would be okay with a special town meeting if it was in January? I mean, it's still, it still feels like the same thing to me. You know, we're still scheduling a special, and it seems like worse timing, less attendance in January.
No, it may be. I was hoping we could find a way to do it in April, but, you know, prior to April by a week, but it doesn't sound like that.
Not with, not with the Attorney General. I mean, I completely understand the reason we voted before, I voted before to not have a special, for the, many of the same reasons that have been raised, but this is an entirely different animal, and we have to respond.
I just don't think we've exhausted the options of, an option other than a fall town meeting with, with town council, so. Do you want to call the question? I'll call the question.
Take a bow? Sorry, what's the question? Did you have one more? He was wanting to move the question. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. The vote is three to two, so we'll be having a special town meeting on November 6th. Sarah, you're okay with that, right? Okay, then, the other thing we really wanted to focus on is our strategic planning. So we can open the discussion on the follow-up to that. Everyone got notes from Janice, and I think maybe we wanted to talk about having another meeting with Janice to continue our process.
I think that'd be great.
And maybe any other thoughts that people have?
Maybe in the fall? I don't, I mean, not-
On November 5th?
Well, I mean, I'm not joking.
We could put it off for a year now.
We just, we did discuss, you know, that all, you know, town meeting around the clock keeps us from, and I heard from other members, keeps us from doing important things. This is very, this is very important to me as chairman, this is what I brought forward, and I just hope we have the time, spend the time to, and I think we will, so.
And I think that where we were going with Janice and developing that framework would help us with exactly the kind of decision we just had to make, where having that framework as a group to go through it. So I, yeah, I thought it was great, and I'd love to have another session.
Well, maybe Libby could reach out to Janice about what her schedule is looking like.
Sure.
And pass around some dates when maybe we could schedule another strategic planning session. I don't know if anybody wanted to talk about it more, about the process and, you know, goals of where to go from here. Does anyone have any thoughts tonight?
I think it's helpful to have a facilitator, so. So we need Janice.
Yeah, I, I think it's sort of strategic planning, it's who, what, when, where, why, how much is it going to cost? I mean, it's sort of, you're sort of basic planning, but the reality is, when you start asking those questions over and over, it's, it takes a lot of time, and it leads to more questions and more digging. And I think one of the, you know, one of the frustrations I've had, you know, on my various tenures in down government is that we're reactive, and that we're spending a lot of time sort of, sort of chasing our tails with incomplete information and stuff, you know, not showing up at all, the more, and so, you know, I think that framework of, you know, sort of getting all on the, defining the problem, all getting on the same page, looking at all the possible solutions, I think it's something that is long overdue here. And, you know, and I hope that, you know, if we do this, we can, you know, be facilitated through three or four- through three or four different issues, and have the time blocks set aside to do that well, and that it can become the way we do things. And I hope that we are strong enough to say no when things come across Libby's desk that are not fleshed out yet. I hope we are strong enough to say, "This isn't, we don't understand this, this isn't clear, we haven't looked at enough stuff yet." And, you know, and sometimes it may not be ideal, but I think, in a lot of times, some of the, sometimes, like, sometimes we get a lot of pressure. I'll use Sherwin-Commons. We were getting call after call on Sherwin-Commons and how stupid we were, and we weren't doing the right thing. And what we were basically saying at the time was, "We don't wanna negotiate against ourselves." Now, if we had bowed, luckily the board held firm, and the administration held firm, and we didn't bow to that political pressure, the political thing would have been to give in, and try to, you know, and try to appease a bunch of people who were pretty upset. We did the right thing, and it's turned out to be, you know, sort of the best thing that could have happened there. You know, we took a bad, really bad situation and turned it into a pretty good situation. And so, I think, I hope that we are able to define, you know, define our goals and define these issues in a way that, you know, we as a group can stand united with them, you know, alongside the administration. And I hope that when you ask, "How much is it gonna cost, and how are we gonna afford this?", I hope it isn't, you know, it isn't met with eye rolls from the public, you know, "Here you go again." I hope it's met with like, "Jeez, that's how you should be planning," you know, but.
Okay, so we'll think, we'll check with Janice and think of some dates, and-
Yeah.
Move along from there.
Yeah, one comment that the audio for that session wasn't working at all, so we do the next one, to try and work on the audio.
And we were so intelligent that day. The public should just know we were very intelligent.
Are there any committee reports?
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund met this week, and we had a great presentation from the Municipal Housing Partnership, Massachusetts. And they exist as a nonprofit to provide support and resources for housing trust funds, and very comprehensive presentation, but some really good information on other projects that are happening, and how groups are organizing themselves and making more projects happen. And I also went to the selectmen's meeting, Cape Cod Selectmen's Meeting, and the topic was the affordable housing gap. So there's a lot going on, a lot of towns are having very similar problems, so I think it's encouraging, I think the numbers are tough sometimes, but there's a lot going on, and there's a lot more support.
I think Dawn, Rita, and I today, and Libby, Brian, we were at the housing presentation. Libby mentioned that earlier. On Monday, the NPDDC met and had a consultant there giving a presentation on Old South Road, and also Milestone Road. And that was pretty interesting, and it's, and it's substantial. I mean, the number of roundabouts and the work that we need to do there is, you know, is very extensive. One of the things that was, one of the questions I had, and they're gonna look into some of these things, was, you know, we may move vehicles more quickly on Old South, but then we run into other bottlenecks going into town or other parts of the island, how, you know, and they say, "Well, this is our study area." But I'm, so we have to sort of look at that. And I think one thing that we should be thinking of from a policy standpoint is, let's, for argument's sake, say it's 30 million for a parking garage, and, you know, another 20 or 30 million for Old South Road, and et cetera. You know, if we had 60 or 80 million dollars over the next 10 years, we should be thinking, you know, we should be doing our strategic planning and saying, "Is there a better way to spend this?" As, you know, I know we need a couple of those roundabouts, but maybe there's something else we should be doing. We should be putting more money to the NRTA, adopting technology, you know, et cetera. You know, driverless cars are on the way. Maybe we should be thinking of other things to, here, and putting our money, you know, putting our money there, just was something I thought at the end. Another thing I brought up, it's sort of a pet peeve of mine, is how cars and bikes interact, especially on the bike paths, and I think there's a lot of, how do I say it? So I brought that up at this meeting, and people have heard me, I think that there's a lot of useless bike stop signs, and I think that cars don't realize that they are crossing someone else's right of way. When they, anytime they enter the bike path, it's not, they're the ones that have to look out. And, you know, and so I made those comments, and the next morning, one of my employees riding Fairgrounds Road on her way to work, an English girl who'd been here three days, had a car pull right out in front of her, she couldn't stop in time, hit the side of it, ended up in the emergency room. Luckily, she's fine, and, you know, the report I think that's gonna be filed is, "Gee whiz, it's not my fault, she ran into me." Well, it kinda is your fault. If you're driving and you pull onto a bike path without looking on the bike path, 'cause you're looking on the road, 'cause you're worried about vehicles, then it is your fault. And in 2015, the same thing happened to my wife. She was trapped under a car that ran on, ran over her on the Maticket Bike Path. And it was interesting, 'cause a lot of the numbers at NPDDC were saying that we had a low accident rate. And I, you know, a situation like my wife, who was sort of somewhat incapacitated for about a week and a half, and luckily she wasn't seriously injured, didn't get reported. That wasn't reported to the police, 'cause she rode home and didn't realize how, you know, adrenaline was pumping, and didn't realize how injured she was until she got home and I had to take her to the emergency room. So I think that, you know, so it got me thinking, when I, and when that happened to her, we asked at the, you know, at the Cottage Hospital, we were there for a while, "Jeez, give us some stories about what happened." And they were like, "Oh, we get bike accidents in here every day, we get four or five a day." And one of them was a box truck that hit, that drove by on Prospect Street, hit someone in the back of the head, they got ambushed off, permanent brain injury. They didn't hear about it, you know, and the person didn't even stop. The box truck didn't even know they hit anybody. And they were seriously injured. And there was a couple other gruesome stories, I don't need to give them. But I think, so I think as a community, one of the places that we could get the accident numbers would be possibly at Intucket Cottage Hospital. And I brought this up with Andrew, and he said they were gonna go look, because I think we would find that some of those numbers are worse than what are being reported at the police, and I think they're probably increasing. You know, as we, as we are getting more cars and going more quickly, I think we're gonna find that those are increasing, and it's less and less safe to bike. And so one of the things, I know Jason cares, I know we all care about it, is one of the things I hope that we somehow find time to focus on is, how do we make this a safer place for alternative modes of transportation? How do we make it safer for bicyclists so families can bike safely? I mean, I just think, you know, and, and it just, you know, it just hit me. We talk, I talked about it one night, and the very next day, I'm dealing with it at work.
So, to kind of piggyback on that, we did meet with a Harbor Place group, had a presentation from two consultants who would be interested in providing parking consultancy for us, and the whole discussion about, you know, what transportation's gonna be like. And now, as they're building parking garages, a big part of their planning now is the reuse of that garage when it's no longer needed. So it's, that complicates our planning, but it's now important, it's really important that we be cognizant of that.
If you do that now, if you do it now, you build it, you can build the garage, and it can become something after. If you don't, it's very difficult to-
You just have to build it in a certain way with flat floors.
Yes.
And like exterior ramps and things. It was really informative. And a lot of this plays into strategic planning. I mean, one of our topics is transportation, and the bike safety is a huge piece of that. And I also, I was invited to attend the Coastal Conservancy meeting on Friday, and they were encouraged by our strategic planning process, and that environment is a high priority. And, you know, that's definitely another thing that we need to just start, you know, start thinking about more and more, how we're gonna address sea level rise as a community overall, and the different tactics to manage that. I also met with Paul Leary and Rachel Hobart about the NRTA and the proposal for year-round bus service, and that will be on our next agenda. We'll have an NRTA meeting and a Board of Selectmen meeting, another important strategic component when we're talking about transportation, and how it plays into housing. An interesting thing in the proposals today is that the majority of them were limiting each unit to one car, even though they would likely be occupied by more than one person. And, you know, we're going to have to more and more offer reliable other options.
Yeah. One other thing too, on sort of the environmental side, I went to the Shellfish Association meeting and had a clarification about the never throw shells or fish waste in. And the shells are because of, they are because of disease, and the not throwing fish waste into the water is, when you have too much of it in there, it creates anoxic conditions, no oxygen, which doesn't allow marine life to do its thing. So, just, I know that was a question of the last one.
Thank you. Anything else?
I had a couple Capitol Program Committee meetings, last couple Wednesdays, and the focus now is, it'll get in, we'll get into it in September, but the focus now is creating this, this data universe to capture everything and to really dig in deeper, so Capitol Program can take all this data and look at it, pull reports off, working with Finance Department, Stephen Welsh is kind of data guru, and kind of nailing that down. So I think that'll be, you know, five, 10 years now, you'll be able to quickly look back, and, you know, Matt, you like, like numbers and data, so trying to, good things are happening there. And then I also was at the NPDDC meeting on Monday night, and about an hour and a half of conversation on Old South Road, and I agree with you, Matt, on this is great, what's happening there? Medians and slowing down traffic on the hill that goes down to Greglin, how does it, how does it connect with everything else? And that's making it more safe to bike and walk, and car shares and everything else, which is, which covers everything, which goes back to our strategic planning. So I'm just kind of reiterating, I agree with what you guys were saying. That's all I have.
All right. Does someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
We're adjourned.